Okay, we'll go ahead and rise to the pledge of standing for the prayer. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear my Father, thank you so much for this new year. Thank you for the new opportunities that are before us. We thank you for everything that we have at our fingertips as we stand here, just from the people to the jobs to the homes to just the possibilities. And we pray for your wisdom and your guidance to help us to be the very best stewards of what you bless us with and to help us make this year something special. Help us to show your love in all that we do and say and think and help us to be examples of your will and to help us to make decisions not just tonight but every day moving forward so that 2022 truly is a special one for Union City. We pray for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Jan, if you would, if you will call.
Brandon Alhorn.
Present.
Gabe Lahey.
Here.
Nathan Conklin.
Here.
Tim Heiss.
Yes, here.
Peter Bries.
Here.
All right, I trust that you've had an opportunity to review the now completed or full agenda for Union City and also the claims. There's no questions or comments that would entertain a motion?
Will we accept the consent agenda as presented?
We have a first and we have a second.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. We have no presenters other than in fact, I will go ahead and just as I said at the last meeting, we're going to kind of do a brief look back, if you will, of 2021 and then just a glimpse, if you will, of this year and what the priorities that Steve and I and the administration have on our plates to deliver to you guys and the community. So obviously 2021, just again, just from a top line view, that's our wastewater treatment plant. Thank goodness, not only a finished product but a functioning product and fully functioning and yes.
Were we going to do a tour of that at some point?
Yes, yeah. Open house, Rob's still, I suppose, or yes, yeah. And great point because we want to make it, make sure it's available to the public so they can come out and take a look and.
Warmer weather.
Yes, yeah, much warmer weather and drier weather. Holy smokes. So obviously that was a tremendous accomplishment. We saw Rock, you know, obviously again, a lot of changes to rail, to renovation and visioning, you know, the green monstrosity is no longer, to collaboration and new beginnings and a lot of things that are still being hoped for obviously. A lot of new additions in 2021, businesses that we now call or Union City can call home or they can call home in Union City. And then also the fact is there's still, I can't stress this enough, much, much to be done. Those things that people saw happening last year is hopefully but just a glimpse. Because if you guys think about what we've got coming up this year in terms of priorities, obviously Vision Corrigan getting the first floor completion and having Kiss and Deca and Business Incubator space taking place this fall and actually happening in that building with the lights on and then for the second floor being worked on during that time and being finished out. Plum Street Housing, can't stress that enough. We were just discussing minutes ago. I can't tell you how many times I have to answer the fact that we're in a housing crisis in this area. And I don't mean just in Union City, I mean in Randolph County, but Union City especially. And I'll say this a number of times too, again and again, when we were presenting to the commissioners a couple of months back now, Paul Fattis was there and said that as I stand here, we have two homes for sale in Union City. And one is already had a number put down and the other one is not really inhabitable, habitable right now as we speak. So you know, really there was just nothing to be had. And so that is something we absolutely have to see through. And so we hope to have the TIF to be voted on the next council meeting if everything goes according to plan for that. The Industrial Park Road, we actually have a company out there right now that does not have a true access road. Road builders, by the grace of Workhorse uses their road. But Workhorse, keep in mind, just spent a lot of money repaving that road. And so they obviously wanted to take good care of it and it's not in their best interest to have heavy equipment going up and down that road that's not their own. So we are in the midst of conversations currently. In fact, Dave was just on the horn with him last week with Indiana Economic Development to get the funding we need to get the Industrial Park Road started. Rail tower completion, that means the windows restored, the roof done and then the inside get that done so it can be actually utilized for artists and crossing. Demo, the floor blank surgery, that's going to be huge. We're going to see a significant facelift downtown, if you will, this spring and early summer. And that's huge because we can't have new construction that's slated to take place on the corner, the northeast corner of Oak and Columbia until that building's gone. So and then obviously further build out of downtown and new business startups. One thing Steve was very adamant and stressing to me, that I know he won't have stressed everybody else, just because these are prioritized doesn't mean he's not like working on this diligently tomorrow during the day as he's addressing something up here, you know. So they are prioritized by, you know, that's how we have to do our goals a lot of times, but it doesn't mean that he's not, he's just totally disregarding one or the other. And there's so many other things obviously that are on this list also that just didn't make the top ones, but it doesn't mean they're not important. You know, community crossings, you know, we're going to see paving done. We've got more infrastructure to work on. We're going to be in, you name it. The list is daunting. But we can't hit the moon if we're not aiming for the stars. So anyway, that's just a brief 10-slide look, if you will, just to give kind of an idea of where we've been, but also more importantly, what we've got on the slate for this next year. And this list obviously is fluid because I mean, if you guys see things and we see opportunities that, let's face it, sometimes opportunities come out of nowhere, you know. So I mean, somebody could approach us and hey, this is something I'm proposing and we might have to drop everything and listen immediately, you know, and maybe it changes up, you know, how we prioritize everything for the rest of the year, but maybe we'll save up some still. So in terms of other reports, we have no department heads on hand, but Jan, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, no.
Council members. Brandon, let's start with you today.
Well, I didn't see on your slideshow, the Back State Loft as an item that was on there. I know it's not necessarily a city project, but it's something I think we should be proud of. I actually helped an individual move into an apartment on Friday and I was really impressed. I mean, it felt like it was like a New York City loft. I mean, it was really kind of cool.
They're nice.
I'm assuming it's an open house.
I've been told repeatedly, they are planning on having an open house. And so yeah, I'm still hoping so. In fact, I'll reach out to Maddie to see what the plan is there because obviously they're going to be a little bit more constrained in terms of what they can show now because we've got people living in a number of apartments. But yeah, I'm like you, Brandon, I was very impressed with the overall job. It's got a neat feel to it.
Yeah, it does.
It really does.
Kind of unique, not Union City-like. I mean, it's different feel.
It does. And I gotta tell you what, I.
But in a good way. I mean.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, absolutely. And I would absolutely, I'd live on that third floor.
Oh, yeah, I would too. I felt that way.
The Buick is really cool.
That it is, yeah.
It's, yeah, you're up there. Well, I mean, obviously that's.
Well, you're at the highest.
The second highest point of elevation in the state of Indiana. But seriously, just the way it sets, it's impressive. And I'm impressed with Madison too. I mean, she's, I apologize, caught her, Maddie, earlier, but Madison's very, she handles herself extremely well. She's, and she's been very, very attentive, you know, if you have anything you need to talk to her about, she's been Johnny on the spot in terms of addressing any needs or any comments or questions or so forth.
Any idea or update on their capacity? Are they pretty full? Is there, is there a?
We had 77 approved applications for 50 spaces.
Wow.
Wow.
I E. The need was there.
Just by counting the cars is.
Yeah.
At least half.
What's that?
I think just by counting the cars out there, it looks like it's at least half.
I think the issue is they have to get out of their current leases to do that. I think there's some lag time on some of the spaces, but it's my understanding that they're effectively full.
And our commitment to that project was the sidewalks, were the sidewalks financially. I mean, we had nothing to do with the building itself aside, we did have Brownsville done before the purchase even took place. So we did have that study completed. But yeah, we handled the sidewalks and just that whole, both blocks look a lot nicer.
Oh, yeah. The sidewalks was $80,000, correct?
Yes.
Because I know someone.
Well, the sidewalks actually were more than that, but that was our portion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was actually significantly more than that spend because the removal of the former sidewalks was expensive because of the rebar that was in there. And I guess it was quite a haul to.
Asked to go to a certain location.
Yeah, exactly. They just kept putting a regular fill. So, but yeah, good question. So you physically helped move?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a true, that's a true friend.
It was upstairs all the way down one side of the hallway. So I mean, it was a long way to go.
Did you use an elevator?
Yeah, well, after our first haul off, you're like, oh, there's an elevator. Thanks for telling us, man.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that. Yeah, and I apologize. It wasn't just like that at all. I didn't, no, there were several things obviously that were not on those pictures, you know, I guess. But yeah, that's definitely one that we should be very thankful for.
Yeah. The only other thing I had was Randolph County Solid Waste Management. We've got a post-holiday electronics pickup on January 15th out at Pollution Solutions. So Saturday, looks like eight to noon. If you've got, you know, TVs, computer monitors, that kind of thing.
And that's eight to noon this Saturday?
Yes.
Awesome. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Bob?
There is a notice for everybody on a sign change at Save-A-Lot. And they want to have an appeal hearing based on, it's a conflict with, do you have a copy, Jeff?
I do. I do not.
I do. Size being the same as it currently is, but doesn't fit the new standards for the signs according to the Area Planning Commission.
Didn't they have a grandfathered-in situation?
They, they.
But they want to change it though.
They are grandfathered in until they change it. And they're proposing that because they want to put new signs up. The signs that they want to replace it with are exactly the same size, size is what they are currently, but that exceeds what the new standard is for the new ordinance is. So they're asking for variance on being able to replace what they currently have with exactly the same size.
Which that space is so wide open, that sign doesn't seem disproportionate, does it, to you guys in terms of?
No.
What's the difference in sizes?
We rewrite laws and then.
What's the difference in the sizes? I mean.
The new ones would be smaller.
Well, yeah, but I mean, how much smaller? I mean.
I might write off hand. Was it, is it 10, is it, I can't remember, is it 10 square feet for the new sign?
Yeah, it's ridiculous. It's small.
But I think they're working on, I can't possibly revise them those.
The new signs that they want to put on the building and on the post out at 28 are exactly the same size as what's there, but those are larger than what is currently available by ordinance.
Yeah, but my question is like, how, I mean, is it like a foot bigger and it's just ridiculously?
I can give you that information. I haven't, I haven't pulled it out of the county ordinance. But in my mind, there should be no reason why we don't want them to put exactly the same size sign up.
And so the hearing is the 18th, which would be next, I think it's next Tuesday night at 7:00 PM in the Commissioner's Conference Room in Winchester. And it just said, if you, let me see, I lost my place here. If you have no objections or questions, your attendance is welcome, but not mandatory. So.
Can we basically, you have to be there, right?
I don't have to be there.
You don't be there.
I have a meeting on Wednesday night, the 19th.
Are we asking like to, as a council, to provide our support for the variance or is it?
I know, I'm personally speaking, if the sign is no different what's already out there, I would like to see them gain approval.
Yeah.
Because I think the one thing, challenge about the sign ordinance is it may not necessarily take into consideration the lay of the land. Because like I said, that's so wide open.
Proportion, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That sign out there, obviously it's going to look odd like downtown. That's going to be too big. But out there, it kind of gets swollen up a little bit because that's pretty wide open. And I can understand them wanting to grab people's attention as they're driving by 40 miles an hour, which is the speed limit through there.
I really, I mean, I'm happy to go to the meeting. That's not an issue. I can't imagine that this is going to be something that people are going to have objections.
I think it's going to be.
I really would think we would have to.
If you guys want me to go to the meeting, I'm happy.
If you can, since I have to go Wednesday night, so.
Some of the conversations I've had with county officials concerning that is that it's part of what they were aiming for was, was that a lot of these would go through a hearing to deem whether they were appropriate or not. That the standard's pretty small and then then.
They can make allowances.
They can just make allowances as opposed to, and probably the, you'd have to come up with some elaborate formula to do what like what's your, in proportion to the way you're talking.
The object.
Exactly what you're thinking. And I have no idea how to formulate the.
Yeah, it'd be nightmare to write in the ordinance.
Get criteria for that. But, and, but the one thing about this is that what would they do if they were rejected on this? Just leave the old signs up. And we don't want them to do that because we want them to put up new fresh signs that look better. Their signs aren't derelict, but they're, but freshening up would be a great thing because they eventually will be derelict.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Right on. That's a good point.
I would say it's probably going to be a formality.
That's a good point. All right. Anything else, Bob?
I think that's it.
All right. Nate?
I was on, the child advocacy group had a meeting and there are some changes happening this year. I don't know if it's officially been released, but as soon as it is officially released, I will make sure everybody knows. Unfortunately, there's still a lot of abuse going on in Randolph County. And if you suspect something, please reach out to an administrator of the school, police department, fire, EMS, whatever. Ultimately, it's sad that that group has to exist, but I'm glad that we now have one when prior years we didn't. I, yeah, I don't like hearing the numbers that I hear that come from it, but it's good that they're at least getting, taken care of and people are getting the resources behind them. So.
Nate, on that, I don't know the official word, but.
That's why I hadn't said anything.
I was congratulated today for that process. So from a Winchester resident. So.
Oh.
I don't know officially what it is, but they did.
We'll have a meeting in the month of January. I'll address this in February.
This is on the way?
Yeah.
Yes, there's good news on the way. Ultimately, we'll all be happier in the long run, but ultimately I don't know what's official and what's signed or inked or thoughts or processes anymore. So that's exciting to see. There's some different things happening in the county. Another thing is, I don't know if anybody's aware of this, but I found it very intriguing. Winchester, the golf course housing addition that's going on out there, they officially were breaking ground, I think it was last week, in regards to putting in the drainage ditch and things like that. That is underway. So it'll be comparable for Union City. We'll have new houses. That'll help both of us back and forth. I believe they're only putting in 12 or 14. So it's not to the extent that we're looking at. And those are going to be golf course. So it's a little bit of a different view, but ultimately it's helping. It's going to start helping what we need as a community is some new housing structures. I believe that's everything that I wanted to address. The only other thing is Oak Street. I know that the gentleman is working with Steve and trying to get the foundation poured, but unfortunately because of the weather has been the way it is, it'll be dry and then it'll rain three days later. And it'll be dry and it'll rain three days later. So unfortunately, to get concrete to cure correctly, we need warm enough weather and also not a bunch of rain. So hopefully as the warmer weather, which we're away, away from, approaches this spring, yeah, we'll see a house go up rather quickly. So.
Good deal. Chip?
Not much of anything. Didn't really have a pretty uneventful Board of Works meeting today other than the couple of items that'll be brought up here later in the meeting. So, but we did welcome our new Board of Works member, Delia Basinger. And very happy to have her on board. I think she's going to be a great asset and a good, good contributor.
Appreciate you sharing that.
And at the same time, like to thank Susan Pyle for her service all through the years.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
Very much a asset and very helpful and very good worker all through the years.
Yeah, yeah. She was phenomenal. And Dr. Pyle was a godsend to me when I first started on council because she was almost literally a walking dictionary and encyclopedia of information. She was phenomenal. So yeah, at the same time, I'm excited with Delia because she's, she's very sharp and brings a lot of energy and we should be healthy for her.
I get the two mixed up. Is the daughter or the mom?
The daughter.
Oh, okay.
She's affectionately referred to as Little Delia. Is that right?
Okay. All right, all right.
They're about the same height. So it's kind of.
Younger?
She's, yeah, she's wonderful. So. Anything else?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Dino?
So I just wanted to say thank you. I think a couple of meetings ago, I asked if the city could do something about the alleyway on the south side of the Calvary Assembly of God. And those huge potholes were filled. So it's much better. Thank you. It still needs some repair, I think, but it's definitely much better than it was before. I wanted to express my solidarity with Bob and Judy Hummel. Their house burnt down at the end of the year there. And so, you know, I just wanted to express my sorrow.
Can I add something to that? And that is that that's one of our struggles with housing. I think people don't always think in terms of this, but they're, they're struggling to find a place, a temporary, some temporary residence. And with, with Bob's unique situation, they need a ground floor and as little step as possible. And they're having a difficult time. Matter of fact, I was on the phone getting ready to leave to come to the meeting with someone asking me for any, you know, for help on that. And so if anybody has any, anything to offer in terms of particularly rental for, you know, short-term rental that they could use, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, good point.
Dino, do they still need assistance as far as cash or?
I don't know what I would advise them to do.
I believe that right now, there was a fundraising drive via Facebook and Justin Daniels. That generated about $5,000 in total. That was just given to them about a week ago, I believe. The fire department is taking triple X clothing items for Bob, sweatpants, sweatshirts, things like that, something easy on, easy off. But as far as any additional needs, their most immediate need is finding suitable housing. The insurance companies identified that it'd take roughly a year to rebuild their home.
And the plan is to rebuild the home.
Yeah.
On site?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
And you mentioned Justin Daniel. I wanted to do just a shout out to him. He appeared on WHIO Channel 7.
Oh, cool.
Because he's doing a change of life challenge, a challenge via TikTok. And he asks for donations and then provides huge tips for servers in restaurants or direct assistance to families in need and, you know, that case in point, the Hummel family. He said he's, you know, when it came on TV at the end of the year, he had raised over $21,000.
I think he's doing it.
He gave all away. So, you know, shout out to Justin Daniels on it. I think he's still doing it too.
Yeah, I think he's been doing it for over a year.
Very good. I, I posted pictures of the gates of the cemetery because some people had asked, you know, showed concern that they had not, had been in disrepair. They look really nice now. But, you know, in some of the subsequent talk on social media, people would like to see some trees. I believe that there were trees that were cut down in the cemetery and also in the park. And there's really a lot of people expressing, you know, they would love to see trees there. Is there anything?
For sure in the park. Yeah, we're working, we're trying, we've been in, had meetings already with the DNR for trees in the park. Now, the cemetery is a tall order because unfortunately they can move stones, the root systems and so forth. So that's, that's been a, that's a much taller order. But the park for sure, we need to, I mean, I don't think it's probably stretched. We could stand plant 50 to 75 trees without blocking in the park.
And the park is, is looking at a lot of different things between ditching and new playground equipment and DNR with trees and extending walkways. I mean, there's a lot that's on those.
Yeah. And trees is right there at the top. So I mean, absolutely. So anybody that reaches out to you, let them know that, yeah, that is absolutely, in fact, you know what we need to do? It just got me thinking because I mean, I'm not trying to throw anybody in the bus at all, but just when people speak out and say, hey, we need this, we need that. Well, we need you.
Yeah.
We need you. So we need to, before this week's out, I need to work on how we can have a fund set up to where somebody can donate four trees.
I think if people would donate a tree.
Yes, and they could donate in honor of somebody in particular if they want to do that.
And if they don't have the money, when do they want to plant it? Like if you don't have the physical funds to pay for it, well, do you want to help in one part of either A, help dig the hole to plant it or B, mulch it? I mean, there's always ways. We don't have to limit people by just financial.
Friends of the cemetery is a good point of that. I mean, people just volunteer to help clean the snow. And so, so I will, before the week's out, Dino, that's a great point. I will have an avenue and then I'll get with Bill Corbin, I have a post on the website too, of how people can contribute to a, where it's got to be a 501(c)(3) entity we can utilize under our umbrella that people could contribute and basically help fund tree planting. So, cool.
You know, we've lost a tremendous number of trees.
Yes.
The really, we're going to lose a lot of them. We have a lot of very mature trees that are, that are during the end of their life.
That was the most disturbing thing about the experience with DNR is that we actually have a very old growth.
Yes.
System of trees in the park and they're nearing the end of their existence.
Yes, a tremendous number of them, yeah.
All right. Very good.
So two more things real quick. One, still about the cemetery. Somebody suggested that it would be nice to see those fences we used to have. I think, I don't know if there were iron fences or what, but there was like a fencing and that added mystery and beauty to the thing. And so if possible, they would love and I think that would be a nice thing to have.
It would be awesome if they were willing to trail around them and feed them. But yeah, I mean, it really, from an aesthetic standpoint, it really was wonderful. It just, unfortunately, that comes with added cost and upkeep and.
Yeah, I don't know how long those have been gone, but quite a long time.
And they basically rested apart.
Yeah, they deteriorated at the point where that bear moved.
Fifteen, 20 years.
Oh, more than that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because it was before I started on council.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
When that was, I served 13 years on council. This is my second. So that's, yeah, more than 15 years ago for sure.
I think so. Because I came here 30 years ago and there were, there were pieces of it.
Yeah, there wasn't much left of it.
But they weren't, it wasn't consistent.
Right. Yeah, just for clarification, I don't think we've ever taken a tree down that hasn't fallen during a storm or something like that. I don't think we've deliberately cut any trees out of something.
Right, it's because of the storm.
It's not because they've fallen over.
That's good. Okay. Just a last point. Someone was reflecting on Union City and said, hey, you know, we should name some, some streets after some prominent families. And I, I'm sure other people have ideas, but they threw out Reish and Ennis as possible names for new streets. And so since we are, since we're developing a new area out there on Plum Street, maybe we can consider, you know, these names or others that people would think are considerable. Very good. Appreciate that. Very good, appreciate that. Awesome.
Hey, I had a real quick question. We talked a lot about the park. And I know last year, we had applied for the grant to replace the walking path, and I know we didn't get it. Is there plans to reapply this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, the one that we're supposed to be reapplying for is supposed to be a lot more advantageous, I guess, if you will, for us to be able to acquire or actually get funding from. Because the first one we applied for, they only, I think only two were awarded.
Right, yeah.
And so this next round is supposed to be a lot more plentiful in terms of available winners, if you will.
So are we slated with DNR to have a conversation about the drainage? Because I think it'd be pointless to put new walkways in and then rip them up and put drainage.
True, the drainage with, DNR had a different take on that, didn't they?
Really?
Than what? Unbelievably different. Yes. One that would not, probably go over very well at all with the majority of the community. Their take is that that is a, that out there with the water savings and so forth, a lot of that is because, number one, a lot of trees are gone. Number two is, is it's basically, according to the DNR, and correct me if I'm wrong, the DNR representative said that area is trying to revert back to its natural state, which means you should let it all grow up and quit mowing large sections, and you know how that would go over. But basically, like a natural preserve is what.
Or wetlands.
Yeah, wetlands, is what they were saying. The area in the center of the park, near Shelter House 1, their, DNR is absolutely confident that that is wetland area and should be allowed to go back to its natural state.
Right in the center.
Yep. Which that's going to get moved, but I don't think everybody wants a wetland area right there.
You hear a Jurassic Park.
Yes, yeah. What they did say, you know, because we have disc golf, we have other things going on in that area, what they did say is that with creative planning, with, you know, a lot of thought, and with a lot of, you know, planning, we, you can let it go back to its natural state, but with walkways where it's above the water, and still play disc golf and still do all those things and not change the overall usage of the area, but still allow the area to go back to more of its natural state. Because what, what they're identifying our park is, is an old-growth wooded area for, you know, that's outside the city limits, and it's reverting back, that's what nature does. Yeah. Your expression says it out. That's why I've kept all that under wraps. It's going to go over like a little balloon, so. Excuse me. But yes, that is exactly what Department of Natural Resources. And there were several things too, like tree preservation, they're trying by not mowing so close to trees, which has consequences. Where we're basically doing harm to our trees by mowing too close. Yeah, so we need to look at maybe mulching more, you know, and, what's that, sorry?
That may, that may be real.
Yeah, with the root systems, yeah, because there's a lot of root systems out there, they're quite visible, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
And so, yeah, I mean, we've got our work cut out for us, to say the least. So it's all overcomeable. She basically pointed me in directions to go and start viewing areas like what she would recommend we allow our park to do in certain areas. And this is not the whole park. This is in that immediate north of Shelter House 1, over towards the Horseshoe area and things like that. That's, that's the area she's the most concerned with. So what we're going, what we're trying to do is come up with basically a scenario of plans to present to you guys this year that will, like splash pad and playground equipment over by the current pool system, more natural habitat in that area, tree planting, pathway, all of this. And allow us to really dig in and start having some impact on this. Since it's already out of the, I mean, actually, our playground equipment's in a shaded area, which everybody would think would be a great idea, but that's actually allows mold and bacteria to grow and things like that, so they're even recommending bringing it out to the sunlight. Yep.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it really should be out there, like, like by the pool area would be an ideal area. That should be the whole way.
There's plenty of parking there, and that should be the plan.
Yep. Plus, we can make it truly ADA accessible, because you can connect everything with sidewalks out of the pool parking lot. So big changes, big plans, I just haven't let them count out the bank. Until now.
Well, to throw another curveball, any question with the property that is to the north of the park? That's across from Waste Widesuit Replant. Can we make our park, any more conversations with that? Yeah, with that company, I mean, we could potentially extend our park and have even more.
I believe that there's probably a pretty good opportunity to create walking trail extension, maybe joining the new neighborhood with, with the park and giving a direct access through the riverbed. Would you be willing to have that conversation?
Yeah.
Will you send your number? Trap them down and have that conversation, so I have not done that.
Yeah, because I feel like that would be, at least it's a trade-off. The center of our old park will still be there, but it won't be as usable the way it was, and that will be shifting it a little bit.
I don't think we'll ever gain control of that property.
Okay.
But I think maybe some avenues for walking trails and know of understanding, and I don't think they'll ever sell it or gift it because of, you know, the original contamination and what all they've had to do to remediate the property. But I think there's area for conversation. Yeah, because generally, those areas, they're fine to walk on, they just don't disturb the ground.
Yeah, you can't dig, you can't do anything.
And so, and not to put the spotlight on you, but I mean, you made a good point some time back. I mean, if we think big picture here, we think about the housing development on Plum, think about eventually connecting that to the park through, like via a walkway, how appealing that would be as a prospective homeowner, or the, oh, yeah, by the way, you can look out your window and you see where the trail starts, that takes you right into the park. That would be pretty appealing, you know, where you.
The park's two miles away, but guess what? You can get there on this walkway.
Exactly. So I mean, that, all of a sudden, now you start, you increase your connectivity, which is such a huge selling point nowadays with neighborhoods.
And that, and that's a nice nature walk.
Yeah, it would be.
Really, no doubt.
Because of the fact that you're not going to be able to do much to disturb it, it's going to be.
Yeah.
Like I imagine, you can't even play disc golf over there, but it'll be walking and growing up.
And kids could ride their bike to the.
Yeah, exactly, yep. Yeah, it'd be a safe route to the pool for folks back there, but I mean, school districts and, so yeah, I mean, so we'll get you information to call, and then we start that ball rolling.
Cool, happily.
That'd be great, because I mean, bare minimum, we can start with a gravel path, if anything, you know, until we raise funds to.
Gravel path, as they continue ripping up streets, we can do the millings. I mean, there's all kinds of recycle that we could do to at least make it usable.
Exactly.
Just sits there and grows up. They mow it four times a year, that's it.
Oh, I know. It really would be a cool area to walk.
Yeah, that, the weather creek just snakes through there. I feel like there'd be some cool wildlife, so.
Absolutely. Very good. Brandon, look what you did.
Open the can of worms with that, we brought the wobbie back. Thought it was.
Tito, did you have anything else? Moving on, the, we have no old business, but new business, we need to elect a 2022 council president. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank first 10 and then now Brandon, you know, serving the past few years.
It was an honor and a privilege. I do appreciate it.
Well, you guys both definitely.
Compliments to our council.
And so I would just, it's my job to throw it up for nomination, so that's in your guys' court.
I would nominate Nathan Confin for council president for the year 2022.
Sure.
Did you want to start you with the bus?
I mean, who wants to call my wife, because?
Excuse me, sorry. Alright, well, we have a first and say, if no further discussion. Jan, you want to do a roll call, or do you just want me to put it out for consensus?
You can just put it out for consensus.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, thanks for avoiding that awkward spot. Alright, very good. Last, purchase of a Boss 250 all-in-one for water department truck, and I believe this is where I turned the floor, were you? Correct, so we made the purchase on the three trucks from Eco Vehicle Systems, R&amp;D Holdings, and I'm not sure who the third one was, but anyway, the 2500 series truck has a piece of equipment that theoretically could be removed, but we find it very useful and something that utilities would love to have access to. It's a three-in-one, it welds, it's a compressor, and it is an emergency standby generator, so. It's already plumbed into the truck. ECO will remove it if you guys say no, but the Board of Works was in favor of doing it. It would basically be funded through the water department. It's got all the parts and pieces. It's going to make that truck very serviceable, very useful. They're going to be able to weld and fix things on the go without having to dismantle and take back to the shop, so on and so forth. The compressor and the generator, generator, that's, that's pretty self-explanatory, the compressor. I wasn't sure why they would need that, but, you know, Brad very quickly threw out, you know, they're not able to do things like sandblast the fire hydrants and clean them up and paint them and do things like that, because it's just not physically capable. Now with this piece of equipment right from the truck, they're able to do that kind of work. So I think it's a good idea that we go ahead and buy it. We've done some research. That type of equipment is in the neighborhood of $13,000 to $20,000 new, and like I said, this one's already plumbed to a breaker box on the truck, and, you know, it's already set up, so. We have ran it, we know that it's in good working order. Like I said, we've got the welding equipment and all this stuff that came with it, so.
How much more is it?
It's 10 grand.
So that type of work that would be done, you kind of mentioned sandblasting, for example, is that something that you would typically go out and rent equipment to use, or hire somebody to do the job, that kind of thing?
Would do that kind of work, yes, that's what they would do. Unfortunately, and this is kind of a sidebar conversation, you know, our hydrants aren't bright and shiny and.
They've been painted and painted and painted and painted.
Right, so, you know, some of that stuff is maintenance and upkeep that a lot of times our guys don't have time to get to on a daily basis, but it is something that we really would like to be better at. And equipment like this on our apparatus, on our trucks, enable us to be able to do it more on the fly, instead of having to make special arrangements and rent equipment and do things like that that, you know, just isn't always logistically practical.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, if we're having to rent equipment over time, it'll pay for itself.
Yeah, right.
That sounds like it would, potentially.
Question, I know we discussed this last year, I don't know if it's come to the forefront, are we doing an auction to get rid of some stuff?
That is absolutely the plan. They're finishing the transition to the new vehicles. We will be, I don't know what the right word is, we will be basically compiling all that equipment and identifying whether it's practical or economical enough to actually hold an auction. And maybe something that we take sealed bids, and maybe, I'm not sure how we'll liquidate things, but there's.
Basically, we're liquidating some things that would help.
Probably going to be seven to 10 pieces of equipment, apparatus, vehicles, that we would basically be looking to thin the herd, so to speak.
I note the Solid Waste Management Group is looking for a pickup truck.
Well, we probably have one that they, they may want to take a look at.
Yeah, that's the ordinance truck, right?
Well, we've already moved stuff around, but yes, we have pickup trucks, so it would be part of that, so.
Yeah.
So now you're saying that by selling some of these things off, that that'll sort of balance off the.
And if this doesn't work out in five years, we go to auction it. I mean, how much is it really going to depreciate? It's a diesel engine, it's not really going to depreciate as quickly as a normal vehicle. I mean, it's another asset that if we need it, they've got it.
One of the things that Brad was looking forward to putting that truck and an operator to use for was the, with the upcoming lead line replacement, documentation and replacement that we're, we're going to be doing, that was part of one of the projects that he wanted to, he plans on putting Zach Myers on and on a lot of that, and he's using that truck, and it's going to be a good application for it.
So basically, today, the Board of Works approved buying the piece of equipment. There was conversation as to whether or not we could go up to 10 at the Board of Works, or if it was $999.9 that we could go up to, so we just want your approval tonight to make the purchase, so we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
I always like to double-check with Jan. How much of a wrench does this throw into your life?
No, it's okay, because it's water, so.
Some water.
Which makes it a lot easier.
I move that we approve purchase Boss 250 all-in-one for water department truck.
We have a first, and we have a second?
I'll say it.
I think Tito might hear. Jan, if you would, roll call them.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Bob Lee?
Yes.
Nathan Confin?
Yes.
Then Heist?
Yes.
Tito Frias?
Yes.
Bob or Bill, would you like to approach council?
I've got more.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
I was gonna say, there's a couple more shots on there.
The South Florida being moved.
You have this laying in front of you from RQAW. I need this approved tonight. This is basically starting the process through RQAW to develop and build out the south water loop that's going to basically run down the access drive for the south wind turbine, through the field, across behind B&amp;M Steel out to Eco Vehicles. It'll basically loop that water line, which is going to be hugely beneficial operationally for the fire department. It's going to be hugely beneficial for future development, which the reason we're kind of throwing this in as kind of an emergency project that we want to get started is we, we had a very positive meeting towards the end of last year with a firm looking to build a very large facility here, and we know that it's in architecture right now, and by doing this now and getting the ball rolling, theoretically, it's going to be finishing up about the same time that they could be starting their construction process, which is going to be very important for their business, because they're going to use pretty large volumes of water.
And having sat in your seat before, I know the first question in my mind is, okay, who and what do they do? And unfortunately, because of the nature of their business and because they have competition within the relative area, we can't divulge that information from a privacy standpoint. So the other thing to consider then would be big picture, that even if this company wasn't to come here, this still serves an area of land for development that this would be a must if the land would be to be built upon by a company, if that makes sense. So in other words, for us to truly market this land anyway for new business to come in, this would be a road we'd have to travel anyway.
Yeah, basically, the issue, we've got water out there, Eco Vehicle has water. The issue is it's a dead-end main. So basically, it's not, it's barely enough, because it's a dead-end type main, that it's barely enough to flow their sprinkler system. It does, but it's.
They're right on the.
It's not pressurized.
Back in for adequate pressures and adequate water flow capabilities. So this is something we can't, we're not going to be able to not do. It's got to be done, it's just a matter of when. What we're proposing is that we do it sooner than later. So what we need you guys to approve is the $22,400 for RQAW to start this process and basically refresh the 2014 plan, and basically start working on the funding and doing all that work.
Question, will this benefit any of the land, the area next to Kearns where we're potentially wanting to put a drive?
It shouldn't.
Currently, no, but it's going to benefit, like B&amp;M Steel is begging us for our services, water and waste. It's going to benefit them immediately, because the lines basically want to come right to their property.
They want water, Mike.
They want water, they want wastewater, they want all that, so it is a huge benefit, and plus, it's going to improve, like I said, water flow capabilities and pressures in the area all the way around. and pressures in the area all the way around.
It may, like you say, it's not going to directly benefit the other development areas to the north, but would probably be, if that's, if that's to be developed, there's going to take more development with water, but it's all going to tie together and enhance.
True.
So, if to do what you need to do to the north, this still needs to happen.
Correct.
So, it's going to be...
Well, it has to run about...
If you were looping, if you're trying to service that area that he's referring to with, to get adequate service, you'd probably still have to loop around, do a similar loop. That loop's going to have to exist anyway.
Right.
So, the twenty-two thousand four hundred, this is only the design and cost. It's not even an idea of how much it's going to cost.
This is basically creating the documents to be able to get grant funded, to be able to do it, to run seventy-two hundred feet linear feet of water line.
Do we have a ballpark of what that's going to cost?
Me, no. I do not.
Did we talk to other engineering companies to see if the twenty-two four...
In 2014, the overall plan was created by Westler, and RQAW is going to basically refresh all the paperwork, make sure everything's...
Actualized.
Right.
Is it...
Correct, and then they're going to start getting out of funding.
Have we talked to Westler? Is it cheaper for them to do it since they already did it?
I can't answer that question.
It seems expensive.
That's a lot.
Because this was, yeah, this is...
So, twenty-two thousand to refresh paperwork?
Yeah, that's...
It's not cheap.
That's about how much we...
It sounds like it's already designed.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I struggle with there.
Well, we could certainly run it under Westler. Yeah, we can reach out to them, but again, the project's got to be done, so...
So, is this documentation that we already paid for in 2014?
I wasn't in this role in 2014, so I'm going to have to go back and consult with Marty because that was, Eco oversaw that when it was state major.
I'm sure we did.
We went through that.
I'm sure we did. I remember.
Also, it looks like they were asked to submit a proposal. Were they the only ones asked to submit proposal? Were we trying to get different?
Well, generally, what we try to do is we try to spread these projects around to the different consulting firms that we work with on a regular basis. So, again, what I was asked to present was this information to you so that we can move this thing forward because until the council approves it, we're kind of dead in the water.
So, I guess my question is, was it a call for proposals and only one responded?
Oh, it comes through the...
Or did we just approach these guys?
I'd have to check Marty to see if he threw it out to Westler. I really can't.
So, I guess, what's the sense of urgency here? I mean, I know we're kind of talking in code about, not specifics about this business. I know about it, but have they got back with you? I mean, are they pretty certain that they're...
Well, it's in architecture right now.
Yeah, so...
So, they followed up with you?
It's not right on anything in terms of them saying, yes, this is a date we begin, we begin, or we plan to begin construction. We don't have that.
Gotcha.
We don't even know if they're in process to purchase said land yet, correct?
Until the architecture's done, I don't know that we're going to know much more until that process is complete.
I agree with Tito and Brandon. Twenty-two grand for a refresh of paperwork?
I think we should at least reach out to Westler and...
If they did the paperwork, say, hey, what's it cost to get this up to date?
I'm happy to do that.
Could come back next meeting and see what they're...
Say it's two weeks could kill us, I guess, that's the...
I don't think that would hurt anything.
I don't think it killed you. I mean, I think your fifty days on getting a pipe here to start laying it, so...
Well, and this is just the design. It's not even, here's what we need to order, so...
Which is, these notoriously, I mean, if you look back at any of the projects we've had done, like around housing, for example, slum stream, I mean, unfortunately, engineering design is expensive by nature. So, it's not so much, I don't think I'd call into question the amount that's being charged here as much as it's the right call to call into question as to what would Westler be able to come back with in terms of having done this?
Yeah, at least I could see that.
And what would they, yeah.
Yeah.
If they come back and say it's the same price, well, all right, let's...
Dark, right?
I just have the sense that the drawings or the, you know, the documents have been repaired, and based on this, it just sounds like they're refreshing it, which I'm not sure how much refreshing would need to be done.
Probably updating costs.
Yeah.
Cost increases, that would be the main thing.
I mean, I don't want to hold up the project, but I think it's worth checking.
Right. We'll do that.
Here's the deal. If they ink it that they're buying it, and beforehand, we can do a special meeting. Is that where, everybody will come together for a special meeting to put this?
Sure, oh, yeah, absolutely.
We have to do, what, forty-eight hours, Jan?
Yep.
Okay. So, if they buy that land...
I think architecture is going to be done by the next council.
Yeah. That works.
But you can do a special?
No.
Well, I love the idea, but...
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Double the price tag.
Yeah. Well, and if we're going to spend twenty-two grand just on this, this is going to cost one point eight nine dollars. Something ridiculous. I mean, seventy-two hundred linear feet, it's not going to be cheap. So, the building, the business coming to town at least has to show that it's going to be providing tax benefits.
At least going to be first to see water.
Twelve-inch water main, yeah.
Well, quite frankly, when we're looking at grant opportunities, we need that anyway. We need to have a reason.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so next on my plate is, I've given you documentation on Polaris UTVs. This too is discussed at the Board of Works. Emergency services are of the opinion that it's in our best interest to look at acquiring a couple of these vehicles. Three times in the last six months, we've needed to be well off the roadway where our apparatus and our vehicles are not capable of going. We have walked, we have depended somewhat on people that are willing to allow us to use or help us use similar vehicles. The situation of getting the last one out of the ditch is what is prompting this. I think the city, from a liability perspective, is going to be a lot better off, a lot better protected if it's our personnel operating the equipment, if it's our personnel doing the removal, if we don't have third-party bystanders involved in actually getting somebody to safety. Not that we didn't appreciate their assistance, but when I've got a razor completely vertical in a side ditch ready to roll backwards with somebody in it, that's not ever a good thing.
Yeah, search and rescue is one thing. It's, right, search part is one thing, it's the rescue.
We have allowed these type vehicles on our streets. I'd like to believe that everybody follows the law. They don't. The police need the ability to periodically pursue those individuals that are misbehaving. The one for the PD would be the General, which is kind of a crossbreed of the Razor and the Ranger. It does have a small payload capacity and a very short bed. The Ranger on the fire department side is the full-size vehicle. It would have a very large payload capacity and it'd be converted to a medical transport system with basically a cop-type thing in the bed. Why I'm bringing it to you now is because we literally need to order these if we even want to get them this year. So, what I'm asking is that you guys allow us to pursue this. I can't tell you exactly what it's going to cost because we have to look at some options and things like that. We will work with Jan on financing once it gets time to actually do that, but unfortunately, the availability of these things are practically zero. People are ordering and waiting six and seven, eight months for, to take delivery, so I would like to start the process as soon as possible. Realistically, it's going to be somewhere till they're outfitted and ready to be utilized. It's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty grand, I'm anticipating. They're not going to be luxurious, they're going to be work vehicles.
They're Polaris, so I'm assuming this is going locally through Brad's?
We're doing everything we can do to stay local, yes.
Okay.
There is a government discount program. They believe it's ten percent, but we don't, they're working on getting us the exact details on that because we don't even know exactly what that government pricing is.
Another question, and don't hate me. Prior to the last twelve months, how many times in the last five years have we needed off-road vehicles?
We have made a couple of removals in my career from tree stands. We have made a couple of removals from, you know, automobile accidents that were well out into the field. Did we accomplish our mission? Absolutely, but it's not easy with the types of vehicles that we operate. Have I made adjustments? Absolutely. You know, four-wheel-drive pickup, four-wheel-drive ambulance, four-wheel-drive engine, but still, they can't go everywhere. Our apparatus, law enforcement vehicles included, would not have gotten Mr. Jeffries out of where he was at.
They got into the area slightly with one of the Tahos of the police department and then...
And was afraid they were going to...
Then abandoned and turned around because they were afraid it was going to, because it's not purely off-road vehicle.
That gave us a little bit of to do it.
To that degree.
That's the second time we've had to go through that search.
For the search, yes.
Three months.
So, this purchase, would it fit into your current budget or are you actually asking for additional funds?
I both believe we're going to be able to find a line item that we can use to make payments. What I would propose is that we look at like a three-year payback on this piece of equipment. Currently, right now, the fire department doesn't need an ambulance, we're, we don't, the pickups paid for. You know, we obviously have to get Jan's approval and work with her to figure it out, but I got to be able to start the process and get to an end dollar price, and I have to be able to order it before I can even begin to start that process because I don't know what the timeline's going to be. I know this is exactly backwards to the way we should, I should be bringing you a hard dollar price and here's the quote, and this isn't going to work that way.
Basically, looking at potentially forty thousand dollars, two off-road vehicles, you guys are going to hate for how I say this, that we may or may not use in the next two to three years. What if we just did one and it was a shared vehicle, emergency services, because I know that's what the vehicles used to be?
That's, that's fine, but you just need to know that if we did that, it's got to be set up for basically recovery of a body. And it's going to be slower, and it's going to be, you know, a heavier vehicle than what is going to catch a razor or zip into your harder part. So, as long as you guys know that that's the score, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, we definitely, it definitely has to be that, equipped in that manner to do that, that'd be the...
I mean, I think that's a good compromise. I mean, to look at just one instead of two.
Well, and in my opinion, it would need to be definitely a vehicle that's going to be utilized only in that opportunity to keep it, keep its longevity and value as long as possible versus it's driven around to every different event and beat up and sat on and things like that, and it's not being utilized for what it's needed to be. I think, yeah, we could use one, but I also don't want to see it just kind of driven around town, hanging out just to check or as a chase vehicle or anything like that. Its only use is like a snowmobile. You only use a snowmobile when there's snow on the ground or when there's a person lost in the woods. You don't use it to just drive around. That's my take, but...
To that whole point.
So, if we were to go down that road of the compromise, I mean, could it be, you know, a shared expense between the two departments? I mean, is that something that...
What did Board of Works say? How about that? Sorry. Sorry.
Board of Works basically recommended it to present it to the council, not making a specific recommendation because it's vague enough, I think, in my, that proper interpretation. We basically recommended that.
Let you care about it and authorize Steve to pursue and gather enough information so that you can make a decision.
Mr. Mayor, what would you do when you're, when you're sitting up here on council?
I'm a bad one to ask because I got bronchitis because I spent four hours that morning, Christmas morning, looking for this gentleman and was wet and was not a happy camper and missed Christmas with my family and everything, so I'm not the best one to ask in this situation. I would definitely say bar, bare minimum, I would do the hybrid or the compromise proposal of having something that could retrieve an individual in a situation like that. And I know that's the harsh reality is what we have to deal with because, as being stewards of finances, because you've got to try to make the best decision fiscally for the community, but at the same time, you've got to balance that against the livelihood of an individual, of a human being, of a life. And granted, maybe that only happens once every two, three years at a debt like that, but I guess if it's my family, I'm like, pay the damn money. You know what I'm saying? You know, I think we'd be all, I think we'd be that way. But again, that's the challenge you guys have in your seats is, you know, fiscal stewards versus, you know, the human nature of it. Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's not an easy position to be in.
My responsibility is to basically keep you guys informed to make the right decision. It's an insurance policy. It allows a, and I'm not joking, it's going to allow a dwindling force to be as, and I'm talking law enforcement, we're both one short right now. So, it allows a dwindling force to be as effective in the time of an emergency as we possibly can. That's what this is going to allow us to do. Because the reality is, we're very realistically looking at being a workforce of eight or nine people on the fire side and a workforce of eight or nine people on the police department side if we can find candidates to fill the holes. And I cover more ground with four wheels under my rear end than I do walking.
Oh, yeah.
It's, that's what we're doing today.
Can I be heard as a citizen and as a member of the Board of Works?
Depends. You can turn on all of it and look for it.
Yeah. Well, number one, I pay a lot of taxes, so I am concerned about how tax dollars every bit as much as you guys are. The thing is, number one, Steve didn't mention it, we have a contract with Township. Township is in the country. This is, you know, this retrieval vehicle is something that we really need, and this business of personnel is a serious problem that you need to be aware of. We talk about it in almost every Board of Works meeting. It's, how's your recruiting going? Do you have anybody to interview? No, we don't have anybody. It's only going to get worse. I mean, hell, you've all heard about this business of the resignations going on in the country. Well, to some extent, I think we're, in a minor way, we're hit by that also, but you've got to look at not just what is next month and next year, you're going to have to be thinking about what is five years from now, ten years from now. We're talking about a big subdivision out here of homes. We want to bring people in. Jobs follow people. Jobs follow people, and, and if, people are gonna go where they can be safe, and, and it's up to you to, to consider, is this a worthwhile investment? I disagree with Nate in the sense that I, I have not seen any of our people running around town on ATVs or the golf carts that they've got. Maybe, maybe that's being done, and I just haven't seen it, but I certainly wouldn't be in favor of spending $40,000 on vehicles and having them use as toys, but I, I really have no reason to believe that that's a strong possibility. But I, I would encourage you to, at, at least let's, let Steve and Kobe explore this, get enough information to bring it back and consider it, because this is a long-range problem. This isn't, I, I support Steve's statement about the dwindling resources of personnel. This is happening, and I'm concerned that, that it may not get better.
I've got a question, and I don't mean to sound crass. I understand the personnel issue, but these are essentially glorified toys. How are these helping us? And, and, but yours, I want to be very clear, I think we should get the medical transport 100%, but I think the PD, as a local community that has 2,800, 3,000 people that were on closed city streets, where you're not supposed to be going over 30 mile an hour, I think this is a waste of money. My personal opinion.
And, and I, I'm not gonna argue with you on that. I'm simply saying, let these guys get enough information so you can make an informed decision.
Well, that's where I'm confused, because I thought we were saying, yes, you can go ahead and order this.
No, I don't think, the Board of Works did not recommend that.
What I need to do is I need to get it to that point, because until they submit the order for the government program and all that stuff, it's literally got to be pushed to that.
So you need a consensus at this point to proceed-
Yeah.
Because we don't have a dollar amount to approve anyway. We're not gonna say-
You gotta have it somehow, I'm on it.
We were talking black and white. I, yeah, I definitely agree, we should go find out details, but I thought we were approving it.
I feel like-
That's not what we're recommending.
I feel like the, the utility unit, medical, with medical transport capability is absolute, that's, that's a, definitely what we need to pursue for sure. Yeah, I'm, I go a little bit back and forth on the other one, partly because I'm, I'm not sure that there's a, how clear a picture exactly on the use of that is. Obviously, if we have a, a situation like we had, we, there's no question that there's a use for it, there, it's gonna get utilized, but now, on the other hand, if we want to talk about budgets, the, the PD is probably in the best position. Ironically, you know, the, the fire department probably has the most need, but the PD's in the better position budget-wise this year, and, and in the coming future because of several circumstances. Matter of fact, Kobe and I had some discussion about this, and we had some discussion in Board of Works, and it went further, where the PD's probably in the best position right now. So while I, I, I get the concept, or get what, what you're saying on, don't see the clear use of it, the PD's also in the better position. So I think pursuing both of these in terms of, of numbers, availability, equip, how we would do this, and the cost of it, is fine, and then we can make an absolute decision. But I, at that point, my decision is gonna be for sure on the, on the FD, and then, on, on the unit for the FD, and then, then a, then a good maybe on the other one, for sure. So.
So, I mean, functionally, if we did a, you know, a shared emergency services type vehicle, I mean, would that work? I mean, and if we find that it's, it's, it's being utilized a lot, you know, two or three years down the road, I mean, looked at purchase a second one, is that a possibility? I mean-
That makes sense.
Yes, yeah.
Or even a year down the road or less, you know, but, but, yeah, I think, I think we, my feeling is, is we say, go ahead and pursue both vehicles in terms of quotes, feasibility and so forth, get the whole, get the package together, and then-
I misunderstood, I thought it was, are we proving or denying this?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
If we're just going to get cost, yes, please go get them. Let us know the outfit and everything.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah, I was under a different-
But as a group, we're kind of just-
But we're gonna have to-
Just considering buying one at this point.
Well-
So, I mean, that might affect-
I think we look at all options.
Are there any grant opportunities from the state? Are there any opportunities from the county where we could potentially help with shared services as we keep growing, where they would see a need for something like this?
I, I don't know where the funding avenue would come from and that, because they're, they're all just like we are, and we're basically funding our own operations. There, there's no shared cost, there's no pot of money in, anywhere, and, again, it, it doesn't affect me one way or the other in this conversation. I just know what I witnessed.
Yeah.
I know how close we were to having a really bad situation, be a whole lot worse. We're, we're lucky we didn't have personnel injured, we're, we're lucky there wasn't a vehicle really damaged, and there, you know, a victim really injured. So, and, and that was by nobody's fault whatsoever, it was just not-
Just trying to make do with the, with not the ideal.
Something was designed for that, and it wasn't designed for what we were doing.
Yeah. No, I, I, I for sure see 100% use for one of these, I just don't know is too overkill.
PD?
That's-
Like I said, we don't have to vote that much.
And again, it's my understanding, that we literally have to plug this stuff into the order entry port hole, or portal to actually get that end dollar price. So that, that's why I'm coming to you ahead of time, because it's completely backward as to how we're doing it.
Okay.
And it got you basically-
What, what does that mean? I mean, you're like finishing the order to put in the-
Literally, in order for me to get all the pricing information, I'm building the Polaris that I'm, I'm wanting to-
Or you have to commit to it, I guess that's-
That I don't know.
Well, build the one that you, for the fire department, right?
Oh, absolutely, that, yeah.
To really simplify this, you are the fire chief, does the fire and police chiefs have it in their budget? And if they foresee that it is in their budget, as a council, we're just kind of a head nod. If we're going outside of the budget, in my opinion, that is where we would definitely need to get involved.
Well, I mean, they said they think they can squeeze it out of their budget, and I don't know everything that they plan on doing. I do know that one of the line items they were gonna take it out of, there is money there, and that's what they're gonna use it for, but unfortunately, it's, it's in, um-
Loa.
Loa, and Loa, you can't buy something on-
A payment.
Credit and payment. Okay, so, that being said though, since that money's there, I guess you could decrease that line item and increase one somewhere else, you're not really changing their budget, so I don't, I think they can do it out of their budget, but again, you still are okay in a purchase that's over $10,000. Just because something can go in their budget doesn't mean that-
I, I see it as a micromanage. Do the department chiefs have need it to be successful in their job? I don't know what Steve does, I actually have a better insight of what Steve does in the fire, because we went to the fire training day. But that's only a little bit of a perspective, but I don't know. In my outsider's opinion, we've only needed the medical transport vehicle three times in the last year. I do agree 100% here, we needed it, but the police one is where I'm sitting there going, is this overkill? We're, we're, people aren't supposed to be going 30 max, 40 miles an hour within city limits anyways. If they are-
Was Chief Wells at the Board of Works?
Yeah.
And did he give any examples of, as to-
Oh, we, we've had complaints of razors zipping down 28 or 70 mile an hour. I, I mean, that, that's, that's fact, so-
And the issue being that they could start pursuit in a squad car, but then the razor would go off-road and they're all done.
If, if it's, if it's a one and done, they're gonna terminate pursuit, and okay, you got away with that one. If it continuously pops back up in the park and it's, it's a three or four-hour ordeal, the cops are going to want to get in a pursuit vehicle and track that guy down. That's what's going to happen.
How often are we getting any comments on the, or, or calls regarding high, you know, like razors?
I, I can only think of, it happened twice in the last year, and it's both been out 28 at high rates of speed. So again, it, it boils down to, are you going to prepare for it? I don't see it becoming a less of an issue. I, I think over time, as people realize, hey, we can drive these things on the city streets, and hey, everybody from out in the country can come to town on their, on their razor, or their Polaris, or whatever, I see the incidents increasing. That's traditionally what happens.
Logic points to that.
But I think you'd have seen that regardless of what we did in terms of-
Oh, I don't disagree.
Making those legal.
Right, yeah.
That's one of my, one of my thoughts when we were just, when we made, when we made them, you know, permit for them to use, was that-
Shared through this vehicle.
You regulate them at least that way-
Right.
As opposed to just being, you know, open, open season, and, and they're gonna come anyway, because the, the more popular they get, the more, when there are, the more irresponsible users there are by percentage, so you're gonna have that, whether you've made them legal or not.
And again, I'm looking at this as an insurance policy. That's, everything I do is an insurance policy.
And, and-
Unfortunately, that's another cost of, how much is it gonna increase the city's insurance to have one of these in, in its rotation of vehicles? Because I know they're not cheap as a citizen to just insure it, so.
I can look into that.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing to know, because it may or may not have much effect.
Or they may not cover it. I imagine they will, I've seen them in other towns, but-
Do we still want to pursue them?
Excuse me.
To let Steve pursue them? Do we have something to look at next meeting, or?
I'm a little confused, because it sounds like we're talking about it, but then when Steve says he has to go put it all into order, it sounds like we're committing to it.
That's, that's my fear, is that I can't get that hard dollar number until they're in the order, the order portal to actually order what you, you're wanting, because there is no inventory at all.
Yeah, everything's getting built.
And this is to be-
I would imagine you get that last step before putting in your credit card.
Because the actual Polaris would be purchased, or the razor would be purchased through-
They've got the base price of the Polaris.
Okay, then, then let me, let me propose that you enter the portal, we, we're all in agreement that we've, about the, the rescue vehicle specifically. So if you go in the portal specifically for that vehicle, do what you need to do, then you'll have your information on what you have to do there. If you don't have to make commitments to purchase, for example, just to get all your pricing together and everything, then go ahead and do the, the second vehicle for the PD. If you have to commit, if you're having to commit to do it, then do the one vehicle, let us approve that, and, and then we'll go back and make a decision on the second vehicle. Because if we order one, if we order a vehicle the first of February, and then we order another vehicle the first of March, we're not off in terms of-
October, November, yeah.
It's not like we gotta wait two years to do this again. We're not, we're not, it's, it's probably not going to have any effect. If that's, and if there's any variance to that, he can communicate, Steve can communicate with all of us and let us know what, where we stand on this.
Again, to me, this is a non-issue, if you could go to a dealership and take one off the-
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
But you can always cancel it.
I would do, it would be an option to cancel it.
Sometimes there's a thousand dollar deposit to order one of these, and then if you cancel it, you give up that thousand bucks.
Is that why? But if you don't, if you can get, you surely should be able to get all the pricing information, get where you want without putting money down on it.
I would think.
I would think so.
Particularly if you're talking about the discounts, government discounts. Because they all know with government discounts, you've got to, you've got to approve that you can't-
Right. That's my hope, and again, Brad's has never sold anything to-
He's not done that before.
To the government process, so he, they were researching it, just like I'm here talking to you to get approval to start this process, because neither one of us really knew exactly what it looked like.
So do, are you guys in agreement with Tim's proposal?
Find out more cost, yeah, definitely.
There's nothing wrong with getting a quote.
Yeah, and, and like I say, if you can get a quote on both vehicles without any hard and fast commitment-
Yeah, get both of them.
Then, that, that most definitely. Because, you know, the real, you know, while we talk about what the PD would use a vehicle for normally, the real meat of what we're doing here is an, an additional vehicle for that same purpose in terms of search and rescue, not, not the, not, you know, that vehicle's gonna be, that's gonna be one of the primary missions of that vehicle is, is for, for, uh, search at that point. One of the reasons we want to do that. So it's just one, it doubles your, it doubles your coverage.
So, so Steve, are you like getting the configurations for like, you know, like sirens and stuff like that on it, or is that, would be completely separate?
Ultimately, that would be preferable. I don't know exactly what their capabilities are. They have a, a fire rescue page for that? I don't know what that costs, it may be something we can do locally, more cost-effectively.
Yeah.
I know a med bed for the back of a Polaris is about $5,000. I believe I can have that manufactured here locally, more cost-effectively. It's basically an aluminum drop-in unit that's bolted to the bed. I think we have very skilled craftsmen here that, that can build that for us. So that would be my thought process with, with, you know, doing those kinds of outfits. The, the conversation is, do we buy the, the simple-based model, or do we put doors? Do we put glass? Do we put a roof? Do we put heat? Do we do the things that's going to be making it the most serviceable for what environment we potentially are going to be using it in? That's, you know, we have an idea of what that's ultimately going to cost, but we don't know exactly what it is.
Because I was just thinking, like, if we do three quotes, you know, here's a policeman, here's a fire one, and here's a shared service one, and, and see what, what the three configurations look like.
There's really just no way to do the shared service as far as it's got to be the, the, the search and rescue recovery vehicle. There, there's no way to, in between that, that system. I have to have, you know, a 2,500-pound payload, I have to be able to haul three or four people in, because that's what it's going to take to manage a, a victim. There's just no way around that, and that doesn't, that doesn't, I'm not saying the cops would never use it, but I'm just saying that doesn't fit well with what their primary focus is on their side. They're just two, even though they're the same ultimate type of vehicle, they're just two different types of vehicles.
They're both geared differently, their suspension's different, they're, yeah, no, they're different.
But again, we don't have to give them both at the same time, either, we don't have to.
Get the price. I think that's my consensus, anybody else?
That's good.
Get the price.
Yep.
Yeah, do, do you have issues, concerns? I mean, honestly, it sounds like if we got one, it would fit within a budget somewhere or be relatively close, and because of the circumstances we've been encountered with over the last couple of months, we've had to use something like this. I don't see it decreasing.
And I, I know you guys don't want to see it used at Heritage Days, I know you don't want to see it used in those capacities, but it's, just the rodeo, for example, it, it's easier to get that thing in and out than it is to get the ambulance in.
I don't know, the rodeo would be not even just up here.
Those conversations are, are realistic, there is benefit there, you know, it's easier to get that down the midway at Heritage Days than it is to get the ambulance.
I'd say at Heritage Days, uh-
Those conversations are reckless. We do do enough special events that it, it does make sense for that, but again, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, because that's kind of what's in my job description. I need to make sure you guys know what we need to be prepared in. I think it makes a, a limited workforce more efficient in a time of an emergency.
I know it does. All right, so, we've-
Yep.
Killed ours.
Made it pretty good.
I am curious, I had just a side tangent. Are there such things as headhunters recruiters in fire and EMS and police? Like, there's a lot of people left Chicago, do they want to move to Union City? Uh, there's people in New York.
Fire department's hired 200. So I, I, I would say, yes, there are, I don't know exactly what that process looks like, but ju- just since last Thursday- that process looks like, but just since last Thursday, because I have a guy on my Facebook page that posts every open job for fire and EMS in the state of Indiana, I think there's 13 since Thursday, departments hiring firefighter paramedics in the state of Indiana, just since Thursday, that they've put a new post on there. You know, I've actually got an interview tomorrow. Don't know if the guy will show up, but I'm, my fingers are crossed, because pickings are slim.
I'm just trying, I'm not trying to recreate the wheel. I'm trying to think of the wheel differently. Like, how do we get those people that are done with New York City? They don't want to deal with being a police officer there.
That's part of the conversation with this consolidation talk. Because the reality is, what Randolph County needs to do is we need to be the step below Muncie and Anderson, because our call volume, instead of us running 15 or 20 calls every 24 hours, we're running 10 or 11 countywide. So we need to attract those guys that are in their mid-40s to come to a retirement station, so that they're, you know, they can work another 10 or 15 years.
Still use their skills, but they're not...
Correct, right.
But they're not...
But we can't get on the same page as accounting to figure out how to get to that point where we're consolidated, where we can get our pay bump up to where we're somewhat competitive and still be an actual fire department, where pensions transferred and all those things. That it's a really large conversation. But ultimately, that's how we retain services in Randolph County for everybody, is we have to stay in the 77 fund, we have to be able to transfer pensions, we have to attract Wayne County, Grant County, you know, north. We have to attract those guys that are looking for a slower pace to end their career. That's how they do it in Dayton, you know. That's how they do it in Indy. They go to Indy when they're 20-somethings, because they want to ride the jump seat. But when they're sick and tired of doing 40 calls every 24 hours, they're bailing out to the worms, you know, to retire, work the last 10 or 15 years with a pension. That's what we have to create in Randolph County to, for everybody to survive. Because when our personnel retire, there is not replacements. And I know everybody just thinks, yeah, sure, there'll be somebody. There's nobody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I would love to retire today, but I can't.
No, you can't.
Well, and immediately, we're not, police-wise, we're not too bad off, but the police has some extra challenges too, because you're limited on the state of Indiana in terms of qualification, because you can't take an out-of-state police officer without going through the Indiana Academy, and they have to be age-eligible. What's the age limit on the academy?
I didn't realize that.
35, 36. Yeah. And so you can't take a 40-year-old guy from Ohio, or Illinois, or anyplace else. Now, there were, and I think there should be some flexibility in that. I think the state needs to look at that. But there were, I can't remember who it was, but there were some active advertising to Chicago police, targeting Chicago police to come to Indiana.
Oh, yeah, South Bend, there's billboards up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Actively advertising, get some of the police that were leaving Chicago, known to be leaving Chicago, to come to Indiana, won't take you. So, to get out of that environment.
Yeah. Indiana's doing that somewhat. You know, there's no, now no more residency. You can live in Ohio and still be a 77 police and fire pension. But the way they pay is just, it's just stupid, ridiculously different than what we do in Indiana. They just don't... I mean, you can put on a fire levy and generate the money. I mean, you go 12 miles, and they're making $25,000 a year more than what we are, and they do less work. I mean, that's just fact.
Not even apples, the oranges.
Yeah.
Well, that's, you have anything else, Greg?
Sorry. I wanted to double-check my data. Well, I know housing is one thing, getting people here. I mean, our downtown, honestly, I get people left and right saying, holy cow, what is going on in Union City? Come on, move over here, and we'll show you all of it. Well, I'm trying to figure out, how do we get a husband-wife to move here, the husband man or wife does that job, and the other one does something else?
I actually have a husband-wife that want to come here, and they're both firefighter EMTs, and one wants to be a paramedic, but I only got one job.
Wait, who needed to retire, then?
I can retire. I mean, that's a conversation that's willing to be had, but you're losing a paramedic for two years, because that's what it's going to take to get them through school. And that's the assumption that they pass. And they become one in all those conversations. Believe me, I haven't, I haven't said no, because it's a topic for conversation.
I wouldn't be opposed to, if that's a longer conversation of getting, and I don't know if this is allowed in that, have a five-year commitment or something like that, but they got to live here.
Yeah, I hope. That would be in chartered territory, but it's not to say it couldn't be done.
You know what I mean? Like, it's...
Well, that's one of the conversations we've had in the past with this, is that, is that what do we do to retain? What do we do to ensure that we retain some people when we, when we get them here? Because there's, we've had people that look completely committed, and then circumstances will happen, and they'll be gone. And the police department, we've had some instances like that, that were completely unrelated to the department, you know, absolutely zero relationship to the department and the work, no conflicts, no nothing, just their personal circumstance changed, and they're gone.
Yeah. I've seen that far too frequently, unfortunately.
I will, switching gears here real quick, I apologize. I am remiss if I didn't mention that our two student representatives were supposed to be here, but they had a ballgame that they had to attend to. It's what you get when you get active kids that are involved, and they're involved in a lot of things. But Brayden did have an update for us, that he wanted me to share, announcing both, making note that both boys and girls' basketball teams made it to the finals and played fantastic games, even though they did come up short for the victory. And they really did. Both games were actually very close, considering both teams they played were state-ranked. So Saul also wanted to bring the attention, Brayden Daniels, nephew, I believe, to Justin, correct, won a wrestling tournament on Saturday without losing a single point in the contest.
That's really something.
And also would like to say that they were excited to see how well Bring Up Your Grades, it's called BUGS in parentheses, challenge win. The goal was to get kids to bring up their grades with the chance of an incentive. Each student that brings their grade up a letter, or keeps an A, is put into a raffle for numerous prizes. It really showed a lot of, it really showed a lot of help in the students and their initiative in school. So it really helped the students, I think is what he was trying to convey. So that was really cool. So that's one thing that Brayden wanted to make sure was conveyed to, to everyone on behalf of the schools, just a little school update there. Barring any, you don't have any other thing you want to address the council with? Bob?
No, I've got an idea about how to get trees for the park, but I'll investigate and give you the details.
Awesome, awesome. Well, the date of our next council meeting will be two weeks from tonight at 6:00 PM, so that'll be Monday, January 24th. That's also the same date of Public Works meeting, which will be also on the 20th, but at 1:00 PM. I would hereby entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a first, and we have a second from Tito, although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.